Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call the order this committee of the whole meeting for the city council on Monday, August 5th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes of previous meeting. I don't believe we have any. Yeah, okay, we approved them all. Are there any additions to the agenda? There are no additions to the agenda. We will move on to presentations. Are there any presentations? No. Okay, we'll go to public input. If you'd like to give public input to the council, please step forward to the microphone. You have five minutes.
I'm Phyllis Williams. I live at 810 West Maine in Urbana. Can you hear me okay? This works. Okay. Yes, I will. All right. I'm Phyllis Williams. I live at 810 West Maine in Urbana, and I was a member of the Plan Commission when we forwarded the hard-fought comprehensive plan to the council. The B3 General Business Universities District was intended to face the reality of the disappearing residential neighborhood west of Lincoln Avenue, with the realization that high-density buildings were on the horizon to meet housing needs. That development has not occurred in this past 20 years. The landowner of a majority of this property constructed three-story apartment buildings, often with parking under or behind, thank you, without any designated space for businesses nor any taller buildings as that would have necessitated installing elevators. This was a source of economy for the owner and frustration for many of us. I attended the Plan Commission meeting of July 18 and spoke in favor of limiting the height to 85 feet up from 75, and encouraged the commission to consider the possibility of a PUD proposal coming to the city, which, if done properly, could meet the need for increased property taxes and the desire for aesthetically pleasing transitional development with bargaining power for the city and its residents. As a volunteer with PACA, I've had the opportunity to witness the give-and-take between the city of Champaign, the neighborhood around South Prairie Street, and the developers of the South State Street/South Prairie Street PUD. That give-and-take between the city, the neighbors, and a creative and conscientious developer, I believe, will yield beneficial results. Eighty-five feet is tall enough. If a developer really has a plan, make the mask for a variance. It is disingenuous to use the Hendrick's House Tower as an example of an existing 125-foot building, which should open the opportunity for others along Lincoln Avenue. The corner of Lincoln and Green is far different than the corner of Lincoln and Main or Lincoln and Stoughton Streets. It is noteworthy that the Real Group, the developer of the Gather, and the Tecton Group, a successor to the Wakeland Properties, both responded in favor of the maximum height by right. A well-referenced opinion by Michael Osterloo supported the change from 75 to 85 feet. The Plan Commission discussed the human scale of development along Lincoln Avenue and concluded that 85-foot by right was tall enough. Please honor their decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to staff reports. Are there any? Nope. Okay, on to new business, beginning with ordinance number 2024-08-27, an ordinance authorizing a First Amendment to Option to Lease Agreement, a landfill solar lease, and it looks like Mr. Tess will do the honors. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This ordinance is in regards to an effort to develop a second landfill solar array on the city's closed landfill. We have already entered into a lease, we've competitively selected installer, entered into a lease-option agreement with them. That lease-option agreement is coming to an end. The developer has done everything to move this project forward to a second landfill solar development. The only thing that the project is waiting on is incentives from the state. Those incentives have been applied for, were in a waitlist, and so the developer is asking for an extension of that lease option. But they've paid for everything so far, engineering, interconnection study, and financing. We're just waiting on incentives from the state. For a little context, the first landfill solar development took four years from publication of a request for qualifications to energization of the system. So we are about halfway through that. I think we're going to get this one to energization in shorter time period than four years, but it's not going to happen in two. So I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Scott. All right, so a voice vote will do it?
We need a motion.
Oh, yeah.
I'll move approval of ordinance number 2024-08-27, an ordinance authorizing a First Amendment to Option to Lease Agreement Landfill Solar Lease. I want to city council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second. Moved by Shandra, seconded by James. Discussion. Okay, now do we go to voice vote? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, that ordinance will move to the next city council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next is ordinance number 2024-08-28, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, replace B-3U with CMU zoning district, and update development regulations, Plan Case Number 2485-T-24, and it looks like Kevin Garcia is going to do the honors here, and sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I'm very excited to be here tonight to bring this text amendment forward. This text amendment has been on the sort of planning-to-do list or good-idea list for my entire tenure with the city, so that's a decade long. So very excited to be here tonight to hopefully bring this thing along or across the finish line. So tonight, city council is being asked to approve a text amendment to our zoning ordinance, which would replace the B3U General Business University District with the CMU Campus Mixed-Use Zoning District, and then to update certain development regulations of that new district to better align with the comprehensive plan, and to essentially make the district perform as intended, which is as a high-density pedestrian-oriented district. The Plan Commission reviewed the proposed text amendment on July 11th and July 18th, and voted unanimously with five ayes and zero nays to recommend approval to city council in the form that you see in your attached ordinance. Before I launch into specifics, I want to orient you to the district, or perhaps disorient you since north is to the left on this map because it fits better on the slide. So essentially, the district is pretty small, and it's only about nine and a half square blocks. It's essentially from Lincoln Avenue on the east, which is at the top of your map, down to Harvey on the west, which is at the bottom of the map, and then from just south of about half a block in from University Avenue on the north, down to Green Street on the south. Here's the zoning of the area. Now, you will note, so the light blue is B3U. You'll note that there are some B3U properties to the west. Those are all owned by the university, which are, the vast majority of all those things are owned by the university. That's part of their long-term campus master plan. So in the future, when they're ready to actually execute that plan for this area, we'd want them to come in and rezone everything to the CRE, which is Conservation, Recreation, and Education. So this district, as Ms. Williams pointed out, this district has underperformed really since 2005, but it's actually underperformed since 1990, when it was created. The intent was really to be office and business and high-density residential near the campus, which is to the west and south of it. The yellow on this map shows the existing land use, it's, sorry, shows residential land uses. So the upshot is this district is basically entirely residential. There's a couple purple parcels, which are churches, but there are zero business uses, zero office uses as well. Just to kind of go through, go through some photos here to give you an idea of what's existing on the ground, and then what our development, or sorry, what our text amendment and associated changes to the development regulations are designed to sort of address. So parking in the district, there's a lot of parking in the district. It takes the form of service parking lots, but there's also a lot of parking, sort of as you see in the upper right picture, and in the lower left, there's parking that's underneath buildings. A lot of that, like the one in the upper right, is visible from the street if you're walking by it. A lot of the parking is accessed off of the alley, which is very nice, and it's nice that all of the alleys are, for the most part, intact. They're in various states of repair, but they are intact. The right-of-way is still there. So we're able to, when new development happens, we can, you know, they can access parking and services off of the alleys and redo those alleys when new development happens. Sidewalks, this area is well-sidewalked, is a term I just coined. So, but they're, they are kind of, they're the older standards, so they're four feet wide. In the future, we'd like to see those wider. Our new standard is five feet. We'd love to see something wider. That's not something that can be addressed in the zoning ordinance, since that just deals with what happens on the other side of the sidewalk. But you'll notice there's a lot of street trees in the area. The area is pleasant to walk currently, but we think we can make it better. In terms of buildings, you'll see a lot of buildings, sort of like these first three, which all have parking inside the structure at ground level. So when you're walking by, you see sort of a wall, or maybe just an opening and some columns, and then a parking lot there. We think we can do better with some minor changes. Here's some other buildings. In the lower left, you'll see a building that, there's several like this in the district. There's just a blank wall facing the street. It'd be great for a mural, sure, but it'd be better if it had windows facing the street. So we're going to address that in the text amendment as well. So again, a couple more buildings with parking underneath, another blank wall, and then the Hendrick House addition from the 1980s, which at 125 feet is the tallest building in the district. Another thing you see throughout the district, which we can address with the development regulations, is you'll see trash enclosures, in this case, in the upper left, that's in a front yard. So we don't want to see that. You see AC units, you see mechanical equipment just visible when you're walking by on the street, and again, that's something we can address with just words. Okay. There's also greenery throughout the district, so you see, there's a lot of street trees. The Boneyard Creek cuts through sort of the right on the southern part of the district. So just some images of that. Okay. So just briefly, I'm going to discuss sort of the main parts of the text amendment that will address some of those issues that I just pointed out. One is just to have a main pedestrian entrance facing a street. That contributes to walkability. Another is that building walls facing a street need to have at least 20% transparent glass. The next is that for buildings that have first-floor residential uses, there has to be landscaping in the front yard. Also, when parking is provided, access to it needs to be off an alley when available, and as I said, alley access is pretty much available everywhere in the district. And also, not allowing parking in front yards, and requiring that parking is located behind the principal face of a building and is screened to make it less visible from the street. And then finally, that mechanical equipment and trash enclosures are screened from public rights-of-way at ground level, and not allowing them in front yards. In addition, we're proposing some reduction in the parking requirements in the district, which parking requirements are one thing that especially hinders the type of development that we want to see here. So as I said, Plan Commission reviewed this at two different meetings, and they recommended on July 18th to recommend approval to council in the way that is written in the attached ordinance, and that included that the principal height of a structure, or the height of a principal structure be limited to 85 feet. Staff continues to support a maximum height of 120 feet in a by-right development for your consideration. So the goal of these texts, of this text amendment, is to increase the amount of housing in the area, and that means taller buildings. It's to have higher density in the area. The B3U zone right now has no height limit, so you could go higher than 120 feet, and the tallest building, as I showed earlier, is 125 feet. We are also aware of one developer who is pursuing a development within the district at a height of 115 feet. So limiting height would limit not only that potential development, but also other development as well. So, tonight, that kind of wraps up my brief presentation, but I ask council again to approve the zoning text amendment and determine the appropriate maximum height in the district. Thank you.
Any questions? James?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I have a question. So I take it Hendrick House was built as tall as it was because there was no limitation?
No, you can, well...
I'm just curious.
Sorry, sorry, I think I misheard your question. Yes.
There was no limitation on height, so they put in a plan and built their...
Yeah, well, that was built in the 80s, which was before the B3U district came into existence. So I assume the regulations at the time allowed that in some form or another. I mean, with, you know, with floor-area ratio, which is how you kind of limit height, you can typically build a tall building but on less of the lot, so I'm sure that they did that at the time.
Well, it looks like they did that because it's pretty narrow.
It is.
So, and our commission that looked at this recommended 85 feet.
They did.
And they did so with input from various individuals that know what they're talking about. I'm just curious, is it only because we have this thing that's 115 feet in the pipeline that staff is wanting 120 feet, or is there some other reason why we should not follow the advice of these individuals that we've asked to advise us on these things?
Sure. Yeah, the answer is no. It's not just because of that one proposed development. So the intent is if, you know, if somebody in this area, so we have nine and a half square blocks of this district, and this is the most prime land in Urbana to develop. It's right next to the university. It's west of Lincoln Avenue, which we always hear that east of Lincoln Avenue is off limits. So really, this is, you know, we have one shot. Well, this is a good shot to get things right. So if somebody did want to develop something higher than seven stories, which a lot of the discussion at the first Plan Commission was about how it wouldn't be economical to go higher than seven stories, and that may be the case for some developers, but I guess the question is, why would we limit somebody if they could make something economically feasible there, when this is the spot that we should really have our highest-density development happening?
Okay, and are you familiar with any limitations that Champaign has between, say, Wright and Neal Street and between University and...
Yeah, so that's another thing that we did is...
They have no limitations, right?
Well, I think, no, they do, they do have limitations. What we're comparing, when we were putting this text amendment together, we compared this to, they have sort of two districts because they have a lot more area. They have, I think, seven or eight times the area that the B3U district has. So they have one district that is really just focused on residential, that's near campus.
That's the northern part?
That's, yeah, yeah. So that's called the multifamily university district, and they have a maximum height of 75 feet. And actually, based on the experience that developers have had there, that's why they recommended 85 feet, because it makes it easier to do a seven-story building. But we looked at that, but they also have their campus, what is it? It's CB3, so it's a business district that's along Green Street, and that, they have a...
South of Green a little bit.
I think so. And they have a height of 175 feet. So 120 feet is sort of splitting the difference, because we just don't have as much space here as they have in Champaign to really work with, so.
And what about the suggestion? I mean, we have, say, we have a limitation of 85 feet, and somebody wants to build this 115-foot building. That's a variance. They can go through a variance process, or is that, is that not workable in your mind?
So you could apply for a variance, but in a variance case, you have to prove some sort of a hardship or a practical difficulty to develop the land in a way that, sort of that the zoning ordinance is holding you back. So I think that's kind of a high bar for somebody to meet. Now, one thing that we are doing with this text amendment is, currently in the B3U district, we allow mixed-use planned unit developments, we allow commercial planned unit developments. We don't allow residential planned unit developments. So one thing we did add to this is adding to the use table residential planned unit development. So if you were to approve this in the form that's in front of you, the option is there to do a residential, or will be there to do a residential planned unit development, which you don't have to prove a hardship, and if all you're asking for is additional height on the building, then that's, that's less of an ask, but it's still an ask, and I'm not sure that anybody is really going to go through the process of putting in all the money to do all the plans to apply for a planned unit development to get a taller building.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary Ellis.
All right, I have quite a list of questions for you, Kevin. So I'll say some of them and let other people ask whatever questions they have. So the first thing about the height, since we're talking about that, one thing that I vividly remember is somebody talking about setbacks in terms of houses in the blockface, and having that huge variance between large setbacks and very short setbacks, and how it made the block very odd-looking, and so we kind of tried to standardize that by, I think, the average from the street and so forth. And looking at these properties here, I'm hesitant to just say 120 feet, because if we look at it the opposite direction, going up instead of out, you can have a huge variance between some of these buildings. It's going to look really out of sorts. I can understand, and this is kind of how some of the other zoning is built, where you have the blockface of Lincoln is much, you know, more dense, is much higher, and then it kind of drifts down, so to speak. So one of the, I think it was your suggestion in the notes, was that if the building height is a maximum of 80 feet by right, then they could ask for a special use permit to increase the height to 115, 120, whatever. And I wanted to hear what you're, that's what you suggested, and I wanted to hear a little bit more about that.
Oh, so if I'm recalling correctly, this was weeks ago, so I don't know if my memory's that great, but I believe one of the Plan Commissioners had sort of suggested that, and we were discussing it. But the upshot is that a special use permit, in the name, it tells us that it should be about a use. So we're not talking about a regulation like height. So a special use permit would be if somebody wanted to do some different use that, you know, that wouldn't normally be allowed, or that needs more scrutiny. So we tossed out that idea. That was just us sort of having a discussion at the time, and I said, "Well, you could do it like this." But then, at the end of the day, we all came to the conclusion that, okay, the planned unit development, residential planned unit development in there is in there. That is the proper vehicle for this. A special use permit, I don't think, is something we could even really legally do, since it's not a use. It's just a taller building.
Right, right. I do think that, especially if you go in the interior of that neighborhood, if you are going to have a building, I'm just going to throw it out there, I know that there was something that came before council, which was kind of in the middle of that area, that they wanted to build a new building. I do think that the community and the neighbors in that area should have an opportunity to talk about a building structure such as that. So I'm more concerned about having a building that's over, you know, up to 120 feet in the interior of that neighborhood than I am on the blockface for those reasons stated. So that's kind of my thoughts about the height. I'm curious also about the front yard, and I know we've talked about where that setback starts. You know, sometimes it starts like on one side of the sidewalk, sometimes it starts in the middle of the sidewalk. It's kind of a variance there. Right now, do you have any estimate of the setbacks that currently exist on that block, on those blocks? Like, is there...
On all the blocks? I mean, I haven't actually looked at the average for those buildings, but if I can take a step back and sort of talk about something that I didn't get into detail about with regard to setbacks. So this area doesn't have that sort of average setback, which in most of our residential districts, that is the rule, and it's a huge pain, but that's the rule. So in this case, we're proposing a minimum 10-foot setback, so that's just standard, but we're also proposing to have a maximum of 20 feet. So what that'll do is allow somebody to build between 10 and 20 feet from the property line. And what that does is it creates sort of what's called a street wall in planning parlance, and that makes it more pedestrian-friendly when you're walking down, and there's just sort of a consistent wall of buildings. It makes you feel comfortable.
And then, we've had lots of discussions about parking, and I recognize that parking might not be as big of an issue in this area, but a couple of thoughts that I had in terms of Champaign. So Champaign got rid of their parking requirements in campus area. The other thing they got rid of, though, was the ability to actually park on the streets without paying for it, right? So the vast majority of that area now has permit parking, and it's by those residents there. There are no parking restrictions at the moment in that area or across the street. It could theoretically push parking across the street. That's one thing that could happen. Is there any thought about how Champaign addressed that parking issue by making the entire thing permit parking?
Sure. Internally, you know, I've, well, I've thought about it. I think I've probably talked to a few people about that idea. That's not something that we can handle with a zoning ordinance text amendment. I think that would be a good idea at some point to pursue that, you know, if we have proper, you know, if we have people who can do that, who have time to actually look into that. It's not really something we've discussed at some grand level or anything, but I do think that it makes sense, especially in this area, which a lot of that street parking is used. You know, you go down there, when school's in session, it's very well-used, and we're giving it away for free right now. So I like that suggestion.
Well, the other reason it could be for free, right, it's free parking, so people can park there, I believe, overnight as well.
Yeah.
So they don't have to buy a parking space. I'm a little uncomfortable saying that buildings that have 20, is it 20 bedrooms or 20 units?
20 bedrooms.
Okay, 20 bedrooms with a maximum of four bedrooms per unit. Is that correct?
I mean, you could have as many bedrooms per unit as you want.
Well, I am a little hesitant about having zero parking requirements for 20 bedrooms, put it that way. I don't know what the right number would be. I don't know if that's 4, 10, 15, 20, but it does give me pause to completely take that out. We've had conversations about just parking in general in Urbana, and I think that staff at one time proposed that parking be at 5, you know, .5, 50% of the number of units. We changed it. We came to kind of an agreement. We changed it, we came to kind of an agreement that was a little bit between one and fifty percent. Right, point-five parking spaces per bedroom.
That was just for a single bedroom. So the, the current regulation is, if you have anything over one bedroom, it's, it's just half a space per bedroom. If you have a single bedroom, it's point-seven.
Right, right, right. So I'd love to hear the thoughts of the council members who, this is their area, and what their thoughts are with parking, and, and of course, from the other city council members in terms of what would be appropriate to not require parking, in terms of the number of bedrooms.
Any other questions? James?
Yeah, I just want to point out that, well, Champaign did make that choice of removing parking restrictions. There's a lot of parking spaces for sale in that area, and it's created an economy on parking spaces that I don't see in this, in this same space. There's, there's churches and other things that rent spaces in their, in their parking area to students who are willing to pay, and sometimes staff who are willing to pay for the, for that kind of proximity. So there's an economy of parking that exists in that Champaign area that does not seem to exist here. It all seems to be associated with either a business that would protect their parking or an apartment building that has, would want it to be the people living in their spaces. I know some of the smaller landlords in that area do sell their spaces separately from renting the, people rent from them, or as an add-on even. So, so I don't know if we can compare those as apples to apples. The other thing is, the campus has student parking in droves down south of that area. I mean, we, they have it also south of FAR, which is relatively similar, but, but further away from, I mean, a lot of this high-density stuff in Champaign is south of Green Street. Right? Which is closer to the parking that's south of campus, as opposed to, all of this we're talking about is north of Green Street. So it's at least green to Lincoln to access that student parking that's available down there.
Any other questions? Grace?
Thanks for all this information, and I also really appreciate the other piece of, I don't know, article or something else you sent us in there. So I have a few questions about the other uses. So I see that we've got the table of uses, and we've cut some things, like grain and feed store, or car wash, or gas station. And then, does that mean all the other uses in B3 are allowed in this new CMU?
It would be, so, the intent, I, I had to condense this, because I didn't want to have really giant tables. Yeah, so this is just stuff that would be being changed. So the things that are getting struck would be removed, the things that are underlined would be added, and then everything else that's allowed in the B3U currently would carry over.
Okay. And is there any other requirement or incentive for kind of mixed-use development?
No, and we, so locally, we've found that trying to sort of force mixed use is not a good practice. And I don't know that there's a way to really incentivize it via the zoning ordinance without maybe getting really sort of complicated and convoluted as zoning ordinances get. But to answer your question, no.
And, okay, so this twenty-foot setback, I have to ask some of these questions too, because I don't think I have the, the same perspective as others, like that. The walled-in sidewalks, I don't like, I don't like cities and things like that, so I can't, I don't personally relate. But that twenty-foot maximum setback, was, does that include if they want, like, a lawn or a patio kind of outdoor living space?
Yeah, I mean, they'd have up to twenty feet to put things there that they want to have.
Okay, but if they wanted, like, a, a yard, a patio outdoor space, that'd have to be within that twenty feet, or like, courtyard interior or something?
Yeah, they could do that.
And I'm also trying to understand the issue with taller buildings. This is one that I do personally understand, because I just don't like taller buildings in general, not liking cities, but I understand that's not the logical reason to base it off of. So I hear what you're saying about taller buildings, you can fit more people in the smaller, same-surface area. I'm wondering what are the other more logical reasons against taller buildings in this area?
Reasons against taller buildings in the area? I mean, I-
Or is it just kind of the aesthetic piece to it, or are there, what other things have you heard as arguments against over eighty-five feet?
I mean, the, the arguments that I think might make the most sense would be just that they create more shade. Because honestly, if you're walking down the street and you're walking by a seven-story building or a ten-story building, you probably won't notice. Like, if you're walking downtown and you're walking by the building that Encanto is in, and then you walk by, you know, the next building with Gallery, you don't notice that they're in different height, right? Because you're just sort of focused on eye-level stuff. So I think it's usually just seeing them maybe from a distance that people might not like, or also just if they're, if, if they're casting shade on, on other buildings or other areas.
Okay, thank you. Because I'm, yeah, I'm torn on this one, not to say is spitballing things out here, is that, yeah, I can agree with not wanting a bunch of tall buildings, but also see the point that if we already have one that's a hundred-and-twenty-five feet, we're not making them any taller than we already have. So that's an interesting one. And then, one last thing was about parking. Just to some Mary Alice's points, I feel also some of the same torn stuff there. I didn't know if there's any more information that is available. I know it's maybe a harder thing to try and qualify or quantify, but about parking availability, needs, rates, anything like that you have.
Yeah. Well, the, I mean, the best data we have goes back to 2018, when we surveyed apartment owners in the campus area. So I pulled data out of that for this area in particular. And back then, at least, I'd say probably seventy-five or eighty percent of the property owners in this area responded. So it was a good, good sample. We had a good sample from everybody, actually. But in this area, it was almost twenty-five percent of the parking that was available was not being used by, by residents. And essentially, so there, some, some people were selling or leasing spaces to, you know, to other people, probably folks associated with the university. But, so our parking requirements say, you know, i-if they said you require five-hundred, well, let's just make it easy. If they said you require one-hundred spaces for your residence, only seventy-five of those spaces are being used. So we, there is currently in excess of parking here. And, you know, parking is also one of those things that can be kind of sort of a self-fulfilling prophecy, which is you require a lot of parking, and then people tend to drive more, so. And, I mean, there's good arguments to just reduce, or to get rid of parking altogether. We didn't ask for that in this case. We, we looked at what Champaign had done, and so there aren't that many buildings in Champaign that just said, "We're not going to provide any parking." For one, banks typically require it, if you're getting financing for, for an apartment building. But for another, they want to provide some parking. One thing that the, that setting sort of that first twenty bedrooms is free, sort of clause in there, is most of the buildings in Champaign that have been built without any parking have less than twenty units. And what it really allows you to do, and I might have some images here, I'll see if I can pull them up when, when discussion goes on. But it allows you to sort of redevelop smaller lots, you know, up to like three stories. So you'll see these smaller buildings, which I, I think is more aesthetically pleasing to a neighborhood, so you don't get a lot of massive buildings. So it really allows you to redevelop smaller lots without having to, say, acquire a quarter or a half of a block to do a building so that you can provide parking. So that was part of the thinking.
Thank you. I have just one follow-up clarification question here, is, I'm trying to figure out parking. I thought there was no parking required, and I'm seeing something about point-two-five spaces per bedroom, and then also the first twenty units. Is, are those all things? Could you help make that, make a little more sense, please?
Yeah, so the, the way that, the way that this is written in the ordinance in front of you is, essentially, we're only requiring parking if you have a residential building and you have more than twenty bedrooms.
And then it becomes point-two-five spaces per bedroom?
Yes, sorry, yeah, and that's the other piece. Yeah, and then it's point-two-five spaces per bedroom, which is half of our current requirement.
Okay, point-two-five spaces per bedroom above twenty bedrooms.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And we, sorry, I'll, I'll jump in. I, I did speak to a couple of developers that said that that is what they've found the market to be these days. So that's, you know, if they did build something, they would probably build, you know, point-two-five spaces per bedroom, or one space for every four bedrooms.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
Well, I have a question for city council here. It still doesn't sit right with me to have no parking with less than twenty bedrooms. You know, I had two thoughts, so let's pretend that the twenty, point-two-five was across the board. If you have twenty units, it's only four parking spaces. It's pretty small. But I'd be willing to do something more like just lower the limit to ten. But I don't know what other people's thoughts are. I, I think that asking people to put in four parking spaces, it should not have a big footprint. And even though that there are parking lots, I'm going to call them parking lots, that the, that are open, doesn't mean that people aren't actually using those spots. It's not like everybody has nobody renting those spots. There are spots that are being rented. So I'm, I'm okay with decreasing the percentage that we need. I'm just not comfortable with the twenty cap as, as the first. So that, that's just kind of a, more of a question to city council. I don't know if it, it should be in discussion rather than, than here, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
More questions? Grace?
Yeah, I hear you on that, Mary Alice. And I was starting to think maybe those flipped, just as a, an idea to throw out here. Because I see the point about the twenty units, and I see those on the screen, and I, I actually agree with you. I think those are cute-looking, too. I'll agree with that, as a matter of opinion thing there. And I think that especially because a lot of the student population really depends, that we have a lot of students from farther distances that don't have a vehicle. And I think that something like that, like, here's a building with no parking, attracts people who don't need parking, versus a building with parking as an option is going to be more likely to attract people who have or need a vehicle for whatever reasons. And so I think it actually kind of makes sense to have some of these smaller units, up to twenty, with no parking. But then I would think then maybe having the larger units with increased parking per bedroom, like, back to that point-five or somewhere a little higher, so that's units with parking have more than just parking for a quarter of their population, if that makes sense.
I'm going to call point and order. Can we save this for discussion and just stick to the questions? Anybody have any questions? Mary Alice, will you take the chair?
Sure, the chair recognizes Chris.
Thank you. Kevin, so, this area is private property, right? These are residences, and these are owned by private owners, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so any changes that we're making, whether they be restrictions or allowances with your new amendment to the text here? Those would be for future developments, right? This would not be imposed currently on the current owners.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so we couldn't tell them, "Hey, get that dumpster out back," or widen this sidewalk right now, or anything, punch in some windows into this wall? We can't do that, right?
We cannot.
Okay. But this is for the future?
It is, yeah, and I, I mean, I see this as, you know, this is a thirty-year, forty-year timeframe for when we're going to really see what, what this does. I mean, a lot of times, I think, folks think that you make a zoning ordinance change, and it's going to change the neighborhood overnight. It's not. It's going to change gradually. I mean, unless you're in a really hot market, and even in those, it still changes pretty gradually.
I'll take the chair back.
All right, I'll release the chair.
Okay. Any more questions going, okay, go ahead, Mary Alice.
Sorry, I just thought of it. So there were two neighborhood meetings, is that right?
There were, yes. The first one, we targeted just property owners. We had five people come to that. And then the second one, we opened up to the general public. One of the same people came to that, and then we got one person from, from the general public at that meeting.
And, and can you summarize briefly? I didn't see anything, maybe I missed it in the packet.
Yeah, so to briefly summarize, folks were really supportive of what we were pitching here. I didn't really hear any pushback on, on anything. I think one, you know, one person who came to one meeting, she's the, the last sole property owner that has a, a house in the district. She had some concerns about parking, just, I'd say more in general throughout the district, because she's seen some issues that I think might be ancillary, if that's a word related to, to this. But I'd say, just in general, people were very supportive.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Chandra?
Not a question, but I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move approval of ordinance number 2024-08-28. An ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, replace B3U with CMU zoning district, and update development regulations. Plan case number 2485-T-24. Want to city council for approval.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Discussion. Jaya?
Just a clarifying, you did not indicate if you wished for that to go on the consent or the regular.
Consent.
Yeah, second.
Jaya?
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm actually really excited about this. I think there was, like, a long time ago, we talked about the possibility, probably not, it doesn't feel that long to you, but for, for, from my perspective, it feels like a while ago. I honestly don't have a problem with it being higher, but I'm, I'm open to hearing how folks are feeling and respect the expertise of the, you know, the recommendation that's been put in front of us. I think this is an incredible opportunity for us to create the infrastructure for the kind of community that we want, right? So when we're talking about the parking restrictions, this is close to campus. This is something where ideally people would be walking or biking. We don't need more traffic in that area. And so if we're thinking about who does it make sense to be catering to in that environment, I think limiting parking actually makes sense. We, we want that to be properties that people are, are using other methods of transportation. And, you know, I think these, these properties that are listed, that are up on the screen right now are, are great examples of the fact that not every single person who's going to need that proximity to campus is going to need a, a property that will allow for parking, and if they are affiliated with the university, there are other options. So I'm excited for this change, and look forward to hearing what other folks' thoughts are.
Anybody else? Discussion. Mary Alice?
Yeah, I think that there, there's a lot of good things here. I think having the entrance on the, on the front road of the, I believe the address is, is what was used, right? I, I like the fact that we're going to try and encourage people not to have blank walls of just bricks. I like the fact that we're talking about making the access to parking be only in the back, not in the front yard. So I think that there's a lot of good things here. I, I think I've kind of made my point about the two concerns that I do have. I am in support of the, what the plan commission is suggesting for the eighty-five-foot height. And I guess I'm going to, I'm going to make a amendment that the twenty no parking be reduced to ten no parking.
Okay, do I need a second for that amendment? Anybody want to second that?
I'll, I'll second that amendment.
James, seconding. Okay, so, do I have a motion to do this amendment first? Is that what we're doing?
So we have, we had a motion on the floor-
So we have, we had a motion on the floor to approve to the consent agenda. That's right. Member Bishop, seconded by Cola Setti. And Mary Alice Wu, seconded by Quizzenberry, has motion to amend the current motion on the floor. So now we can have discussion on the amendment and then we will vote on the amendment up or down. And then we will return to discussion on the main motion, which is approval to the consent.
Thank you, clerk. Discussion.
Yeah, so essentially, we're saying if you build a 10-bedroom unit, you need to have two and a half parking spaces.
No.
25%?
No. If you build a 10-bedroom unit, you need no parking spaces. Anything above 10 is .25, is, was my intent.
Okay.
So, so basically that means-
If you're doing 11, you need, you need three.
Need one. Cause you don't, you don't count the first 10 bedrooms, is that correct, Kevin?
Yeah, that's correct. But, um, so technically, if you did 11, you'd still have zero, because that would be .25.
Right, but if you have 12, you have one.
Yeah, so, so 12 would be one.
Right, just wanted to clarify what it, what it means if you, you, by the time you build a 14-bedroom unit, now you have to have one parking space.
One.
Cause we don't require them to do fractional spaces.
Right, but by the time you hit 12, you know, point, that would be .5, so you'd round that up. So between 12 and 14, you'd need one space.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then just for clear, I'm sorry. If, if you go from 10 to 20, you basically need two or three. You need three spaces, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Jaya.
Um, I, I, I think at that rate, to me, that's a little concerning that it's really restrictive. If we're talking about requiring people who are building to put in one to three parking spaces on smaller properties, it's, to me, just, it feels overly restrictive and against kind of the purpose of some of what we're trying to do is to create what I think makes sense as a higher density, more walkable, more bikeable area. And if you're saying, well, now you have to have one parking space, how much land are you going to have to carve out? Or how much are you going to have to change the whole structure of your building to put in one parking space? It seems, seems a little restrictive to me.
Chandra.
And then to go off what Jaya just said, you have to go through the alley as well. So then creating or figuring out how people can access the alley for that one to three parking spaces, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it makes sense to me. So I, I, yeah.
Grace.
Um, yeah, I think I agree with some of those past sentiments. I think I'm not quite seeing the vision here and as much as I, I hear the sides about wanting to limit parking, be a more walkable, alternative transportation kind of place. And also hear some of the concerns about some parking that's, we'll, realistically will still happen to some extent, at least in the nearer future. I'm not understanding this change in 10 to 20 bedrooms. And I don't know if there's just something else we're missing here of your point, outside of the big picture, how this like 10 to 20 gets there in particular.
Um, do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the purpose is, is to say that if we have, if you have, um, 11 bedrooms, if you go from 11 to 11 up, right, that's when the .25 applies. And I, I'm just trying to be cognizant of some of the things that I've seen in other neighborhoods. We're talking about mixed residential and, and multi, it's not multi-use, but, uh, mixed buildings, right? And I think about, in my ward, um, there's a building, the Gregory Place, which is packed. I mean, it has parking, but there's like, people are blocking the street. I mean, it, it's packed over there. I personally don't think that there's enough parking for the businesses. But that's an aside, so I don't want to create a, an environment that then forces people on the street, forces people into the other neighborhoods. And so I was looking for a compromise, um, something that would be realistic. I'm really looking for about two parking spaces between 10, uh, between 11 and 20. I understand the rounding piece. Three does sound weird, I agree. Um, I'm not entirely sure how to say that, but I'm, I'm looking for two. Cause I think you're going to get two people who are going to park. It makes it even, you just have two spaces in the back. It, it hopefully wouldn't make it too difficult to build a building of that structure up to 20.
Any more discussion? Mary Alice, you have the floor.
I have, I have a question for Kevin. So my intent is to have two parking spaces between 11 and 20. Do you have suggestions on how to break that fractionally?
I, I mean, I'm sure I can come up with it here in a second.
Would it be okay if I just, I guess, can I change my motion? And is that allowed?
So you can amend, you can change your motion with consent of your second.
Okay, I'd like to change my motion that says that there's two parking spaces between, between, let's just do 12, 12 and, and 20.
James? Okay, so the motion now has been changed to, say it again, Mary Alice.
I'll let Kevin do the math, but basically the intent is, is that there'll be two parking spaces if you have between 12 and 20, which is, which is less than .25, right?
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, do we need to call roll call on this amendment?
I mean, you could do voice vote. We're in committee of the whole, so it's not final action. But if there's a desire for roll call, we can always do roll call.
Mary Alice, would you prefer roll call? Okay, go ahead, clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Cola Setti?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Wilken?
No.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Yes.
That amendment fails. Now we go back to the original, uh, motion by Chandra for the entire ordinance with the parking at, starting at 20 units. So any more discussion on the whole ordinance? Grace.
Just trying to rack my brain around parking stuff. Cause again, I do think these cute little 20-unit ones with no parking makes sense and might be more of an incentive for someone to develop it, um, rather than having to require a very small number of parking. And also just was thinking about that this doesn't limit parking spaces too, right? If a developer sees a need for parking, they can obviously build that.
That's correct.
And also a parking garage is still allowed by right in this district, is that correct?
It'd be with a special use permit.
Okay, special.
Cause I, I do see, so in the use table, it says principal use parking lot or garage. And we definitely didn't want just a surface parking lot to be allowed by right. So since those are sort of together, and you could imagine a case where a parking garage might make sense for somebody to sort of do that in a sensible way that could serve multiple places, so.
Thank you, yeah, cause I was just trying to think out loud with balancing those things of creating the less parking kind of neighborhood and that there still may be a need, especially in the transition period. And so just kind of reassuring myself that it's not limiting parking. And if there really is that need and somebody wants to get a good business off it, because unfortunately I hear it's super expensive to park on campus, which I don't love for the students, but I guess that's a, a different story. But just that there's other avenues to still have parking in the future without trying to add them to the smaller buildings. So it gives me a little comfort. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, uh, we'll take a vo, a voice vote on this. All in favor, say ah. Oh wait, James?
Just one, one thing I wanted to mention is I, I do, do hear the, the question about the height. And I do understand the feedback that was provided about that. Unfortunately, I don't think there's a good way to restrict the height in the context of what options there would be for a developer to move around that. I, I totally appreciated the explanation of, of variance and what drives the approval of a variance or not. I don't think we want to artificially limit the opportunity here. Looking at the map, the, the limitations on height are going to be based mostly on the size of the space that, the lots that people are working with, that, that up and down and how far out you need to go, a kind of dimension. And, um, particularly if someone is doing something over 20 bedrooms and starting to have to include space for parking to, to meet that. If you're thinking about like the hub or something like that coming in, that would have a very heavy parking demand under the, the model that we're doing. So we won't see the skyscraper model appearing here. So I do want to respect the fact that there was that feedback on that 85-foot limitation, but I don't, I don't see a way around that, uh, that would provide for development in some places and not development in the whole area.
Mary Alice.
So, um, Kevin, when you were talking about the special use permit not being a vehicle to be able to allow somebody to build beyond 85 feet. But then you also said that if you wanted to put a parking garage there, it would be a special use permit, which is not a use of the building. Well, I mean, I suppose it kind of, sort of is, but it doesn't quite fit into that round hole. So I guess my question is, if you go through the process of getting a special use permit to increase with the, the parking, does it allow for people to build also at a higher, like beyond the 85? Does that make sense?
Well, to clarify, um, the parking garage is a use in and of itself. It's not-
Oh, you mean the lot be used as a parking garage?
Just a parking garage, yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
No worries.
Jaya.
Um, I, I do think it's worth having a discussion around the possibility of a higher height limit. I have heard some questions about, you know, concerns that it would be too much. I guess before we make a final vote, um, like I said, I want to be respectful of the, the plan commission, but I also don't want to unnecessarily restrict the possibility of having taller buildings in this area. Again, just thinking about like this is an opportunity for population density. That's something we talk about a lot, is that Urbana has really grown out and out and out and out. And we need to think about how do we have more dense population centers to, to grow our, our population without increasing the strain on the city by continuing to expand out. So before we move to a final vote, um, I guess I will just say again that I, I would be willing to amend my, um, support of this motion to increase the, the maximum height. And I'm just interested in feedback from other council members before we, we vote.
Chandra.
So as it stands, it's 85 feet. Okay. Or-
120.
No, it's 85.
It's, it's 85.
Yeah, it's 85.
Oh, I was under the impression that we were going with your recommendation.
Yeah, it's the plan commission's recommendation in the ordinance you have in front of you, which is 85.
Okay, um, well, yes, I would make that amendment to increase the maximum height to, what was it, 120? 120.
Do I have a second?
I will change mine as well.
Okay, uh, so now, uh, discussion on the amendment to increase the limit to 120 feet. Any discussion? Mary Alice.
So I kind of already talked a little bit about this. I, I do have a question. Is it, the Gather is on the corner of Lincoln and, uh, University.
Yes.
Yes, do you know how tall that is?
75 feet.
Okay, 75 feet. Um, I, I don't think it's appropriate in the entire area to have 120-foot building. I think that that's going to make that area, um, just look out of place. I, I think that if you look at Gather, it's a big building already and it's 10 feet under the maximum of 85 feet. Uh, so I would rather go with the plan commission's recommendation of keeping it at 85 feet.
Okay, uh, looks like Grace was first.
Got a hard job there tonight, Chris. Um, I was trying to read back in some of my scribbly notes here. You said that the newly added residential planned unit development, uh, planned unit development PUD could be that best mechanism for a requested height increase, is that right?
I'd say that would be the, sort of the only mechanism, other than a variance, which I would, I would just dismiss out of hand. I would, I would not recommend anybody try for a variance just to go above the height limit. So it would be a waste of everybody's time, so.
Because of not having that hardship bar that you have to prove and all that. And I'm trying to think about, so a residential PUD is definitely an option. If a developer did want to go taller than that, and is there anything else stopping them from doing a residential PUD, like barriers to that?
No, I mean, it's, it's simply the cost. Um, we do, the planned unit development says, I, I think you've all seen a couple of planned unit developments come before you, it's, we ask for a lot. You have to, you know, you, you do have to get professionals involved. You can't back of the napkin, um, you know, submit things to us, so. So you're going to need to pony up some, some money to go through that process.
Thank you.
Chandra.
I don't think that, oh, having the maximum height be 120 means that every developer is going to come in and build 120-foot buildings. I think it just offers less restriction in case there is one or two that may want to go up that high. And I'm sure that if they look around and see, okay, 120-foot building does not necessarily match the aesthetic of the neighborhood, I don't think that they would just put it in there. But I, I'm just, I'd like that opportunity, I like to give the opportunity to have that flexibility and not be so restrictive in, in our development opportunities.
James.
Just remind me again, how tall is Hendrick House?
So Hendrick House is two pieces, but the one that everybody thinks about probably is the, is 125 feet. The tower, the tower pieces.
So 120 would be shorter than that.
By five feet.
You happen to know what the advanced computing building height is? It's not as tall, it's like four or five stories.
I do not, where's that located?
It's on the south side of Springfield. It's kind of right on the border of, of this area.
I, I don't know.
I think, I think Hendrick House is probably the only thing within a block of that, that that's, that is that tall.
Mary Alice.
Um, so I, I think I would, I would like to respectfully disagree with, with Chandra's comment about developers looking at a neighborhood and thinking it's not going to fit in. I think that we've seen, um, in Champaign what has happened. There are several buildings in Campus Town, in my opinion, I realize I'm just, you know, it's just my opinion, that don't fit in, some huge things out there. I, I feel like we have to be careful with by right, um, because by right offers no opportunities for the neighborhoods, for the community to have any say. Because once we say it's by right, it's totally out of everybody's hands. Anybody can come in, as long as they meet those parameters, they don't have to go through anything else. They don't have to talk to the neighborhood, they don't have to, they don't have to, you know, have any dialogue with city council, with the plan commission, with the zoning commission, which is why I think 85 feet is, is more appropriate for that area.
Any other discussion? Okay, um, we're gonna, uh, have a roll call vote on the amendment to raise the limit of the height of buildings in this district to 120 feet.
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Cola Setti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Present.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
No.
Two noes, one present, and three yeses.
The present is recorded with the majority vote because it's not a conflict of interest, so it goes with the majority.
Okay, so that-
It passes.
So, uh, Kevin, you have direction that it's 120 cap then, limit. So back to the ordinance with 120 feet and the no parking needed up to 20 units. Any more discussion on that? Okay, I think we'll take a voice, voice vote on ordinance number 20- Okay, I think we'll take a voice vote on ordinance number 2024-08-28, moved by Chandra, seconded by, I think, Jaya, if I remember. And so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it. And that motion, or that ordinance moves to the next council meeting. And that concludes new business. We go to council input and communications. Anybody have anything to say? Mayor Marlin, please.
I just, I am pleased to share with you an update on the Alternative Response Task Force. As of late this afternoon, every person or organization who has been invited to participate, with the exception of two people I haven't heard a response from, has said yes and have been very supportive. So we're going to have a very diverse, well-rounded and I think task force that's ready to get to work. And I'm really very pleased by the feedback we've gotten so far. People are excited about this opportunity and participating. So I will reach out to, the two organizations we haven't heard from yet are the two hospitals. But otherwise, everyone else is on board. So the next steps involve internally working out some meeting logistics and then the membership will be contacted by, the task force itself, the work will take place under Barry Dunn. And again, thank you to Braden Belcher for serving as the internal coordinator as well, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good response.
Anybody else? Seeing none, that concludes the business of the Committee of the Whole and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.